Representative Gattin and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Sabrina Newcomb. I'm from Sevega, Maine. I'm a wife, a mother to two beautiful little boys, and a full-time mental health and human services student at UMA. I'm here to tell you that I oppose LD-471 and LD-606. I did vaccinate my boys. By the time my youngest was 15 months old, he had four doses of DTAP. He was up to date. Shortly before his second birthday, he got what I thought was a cold, and he started to cough. I knew it wasn't a normal cough, so I called the pediatrician and made an appointment. After looking him over, it was concluded that it was likely viral or allergies. A comment was made that pertussis was going around, but he was never tested, and we were sent home. So naturally, we proceeded to live life like we normally would. We spent time at the playground. We went to the beach. We went to Walmart, grocery shopping. We even went to my oldest son's kindergarten orientation. When another week and a half had gone by and my son was still coughing, I put in a call to the pediatrician's office. I received a phone call from the medical system. I insisted it wasn't just a normal cough. She told me it was probably just allergies, or perhaps cough, variant asthma. So I asked for a referral and made an appointment to see an allergist. A couple more weeks had gone by, and he was still coughing. It was early one morning, I was having my coffee, and I could hear him in his crib, and just once, I heard the slightest whoop sound. I decided enough was enough. I packed up the kids, and I headed to Maine Medical Center to demand my child be tested for pertussis. I was very concerned that if he did have pertussis, he could be spreading it to other children within our community. One of the first things I was asked was if he had been vaccinated. Yes, he had. The first doctor we saw shrugged off our concerns and said it was probably allergies. My husband and I insisted. They tested him for pertussis anyway. Shortly after we demanded he be tested, we were met with a supervising doctor at the emergency room. She agreed to test, but said her suspicion was so low, she wouldn't even start treatment. After all, he had been vaccinated. A couple days later, we got the phone call that he did in fact test positive for pertussis. It was my vaccinated child who could have been infecting others after he was not only failed by his vaccinations, but failed by the medical community, who ignored my concerns on several occasions. My child is just one of many who is fully vaccinated and still had lab-confirmed pertussis. If the medical and public health systems consider it truly important to reduce transmission of these diseases, it seems they need to work on policies and practices within, rather than place the burden on families. It is irresponsible for medical professionals to assume vaccinated individuals can't carry or become ill with vaccine-targeted diseases. It seems to me that the false sense of security we get from vaccinations is far more dangerous than the very small percentage of well-educated parents who are opting out of vaccines. I personally don't know a single non-vaccinated family who made this decision lightly. These parents have taken the time to ask the important questions, to look at the data, they've read the inserts, they've looked at the ingredients, and they've researched the ingredients. These parents made a decision that was in their child's best interest. Please keep in mind that many parents who no longer vaccinate used to vaccinate. They stopped because their child paid the ultimate price and suffered from a vaccine injury. Many times, these injuries are quickly dismissed by doctors. These children deserve protections too. I do not believe it is okay on any level to take this right away from parents or to hold a child's education over their parent's head. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions. Thank you. Next we'll hear from Debbie Summers of Litchfield. Is Debbie Summers here? All right, we're gonna move along. If Debbie Summers shows up, just let me know. Holly Austin.
Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representatives Gattin and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name's Holly Aiken-Austin. I'm a social worker and mother of two from Rangeley, Maine. I'm here strongly opposing LD-606 and 471. My son Caleb has reacted multiple times within hours of his vaccinations, leading to hospitalizations, seizures, anti-seizure meds, severe speech loss, significant developmental regressions. In short, while we're still searching for the specific biological or chemical reactions that led him to develop his developmental state and daily struggles, I've chosen to forego further vaccinations for both my sons. There's strong evidence that my son does have an underlying medical condition that makes it impossible for him to safely tolerate some or all the vaccine ingredients that he was injected with, including the mercury preservative Thimerosal, aluminum formaldehyde, polysorbate gelatin, diphtheria, tetanus, hopsoide, pertussis antigens, Hep B virus antigens, yeast proteins, sodium chloride phosphate buffers, latex, formaldehyde, neomycin, streptomycin, and polymycin B residual capsulet, antigens of strept pneumonia, serotypes, diphtheria proteins, and polio virus antigens. After listening to that incomplete list of vaccine ingredients, is it any wonder we have not identified which of these could have caused my son's reactions? Now with that in mind, it's not only common sense, but the right thing to do to prevent further injury by foregoing further vaccinations. We've seen over a dozen doctors as far away as Atlanta, Georgia, run hundreds of tests, including multiple genetic tests, trying to figure out what went wrong and to try and reverse the damage to his brain. All testing has been somewhat inconclusive and leaves me not only concerned for him, but my other son, who may share the same predisposition as Caleb. It is wrong to eliminate the philosophical exemption for so many reasons, but in my specific family's case, it would be forcing me to play Russian roulette with the help of my children to allow them to attend public school, the school I work at. You have or will likely hear today that vaccines are safe. One quick read through the package insert of any vaccine will tell you that they're not always safe, and report effects including brain damage and death. I'm not talking about the vaccine information statements, which are supposed to be given to you before you're allowing your child the vaccine. Those statements include vague words like "much riskier," "extremely small," "so rare," "very safe," and "mild." The package inserts, which are written by the manufacturer and approved by the FDA, include more specific rates of the immunization adverse effects. In addition, they instruct healthcare providers to discuss these possible adverse effects with the parent and patient, none of which was done in my children's case. These package inserts, which are not given to parents, also contain statements such as in a HEB, "has not been evaluated for carcinogenic or mutagenic potential," nor for fertility impairment. Or the Majinacoccal vaccine. In children who received an active-20 vaccine at nine months and 12 months of age, serious adverse effects occurred at a rate of 2% to 2.5%. That's one out of 50 kids. In finishing, my son has an open case in the vaccine injury compensation program due to these documented adverse effects. Given the vaccines are not safe, and my family may have some underlying medical reason for reacting badly to certain things, it's wrong to ask me to put my children at risk for further vaccine injury to have the right to attend public school, especially when there are vaccines that have not been evaluated for causing cancer or future fertility problems. Please retain my right to weigh the risks versus the benefits and make the healthiest choice for my family to allow my children the right to attend school. Please feel free to ask me any questions. I'm not gonna be able to testify in support of LD-10...whatever it is, I'm sorry.
We always want to know.
LD-1076, due to taking one of my last three personal days of the year to come down here today. But my son does have an active case. It's been years. It's not a fun process to be in, and I am not seen as a victim. My family's not seen as a victim. I'm seen as an uneducated mother who is anti-vaccine. I vaccinated both of my children until I watched my child seize in my arms within four hours of his vaccines. And then within two days of the DT vaccine, which is full of Thimerosal, he got the bottom dose of the multi-dose vaccine, and within two days, he wasn't himself. Within two weeks, he stopped talking, and within two months, he went from a normally-developing child to a child that met all the criteria for a child with autism. Excuse me. It's been years. This is the only way I can stand up here and talk without crying at this point. Please don't take those philosophical assumptions away. I can't do that for my other kids.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your story. Seeing no questions. Thank you very much. Tim? I'm sorry, no. First, Brooke Thompson. Is Brooke Thompson here?
Thanks. Good afternoon. Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Brooke Thompson, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Patrick Thompson and myself. We live in Tops, Maine, and have four smart, vivacious children, and with another baby on the way. I'm here to speak in opposition to both LD-471 and LD-606. I oppose LD-471 and have three specific issues with it. One, it has been my personal experience that the majority of doctors I, our family has seen in the last 11 years, have been parent, that I've been parenting, have known very little about the history of vaccines, the ingredients of vaccines, rates of vaccine efficacy, how to recognize vaccine injuries, and current information on vaccines. Walking into a vaccine counseling session with the doctor, I would expect them to be well-versed in all of these things. If they're not and are unable to share this information, how can parents truly give an educated, informed consent? Two, another issue I see with this bill is the assumption that a doctor will counsel in an unbiased manner. Being fair and unbiased is the very essence of counseling, and yet many doctors receive monetary kickbacks for the brand and amount of vaccinations they give yearly in their offices. Because of this, how can we honestly expect all doctors to approach a vaccine conversation completely unbiased with no ulterior motive? Three, as a college-educated woman with a college-educated husband, I personally find it insulting for anyone to suggest that we need any kind of counseling in order to make an informed decision for our family. As parents, our children are the most important piece of our lives, and we take parenting them very seriously. As lifelong learners, we both received college degrees because we wanted to further our education and challenge ourselves to think critically. We have not forgotten this skill and continue to use our education, critical thought and common sense, to tackle every area of our lives, including the way we approach our children's health and vaccine research. We do not make our decisions lightly, and we have done years of research to come to the conclusions we share. What is the point of receiving an education and being a contributing member of society to be told we're not intelligent enough to make a decision on our own? I oppose LD-606 simply because removing the philosophical exemption goes against the very fabric of our freedoms here in Maine and in the United States. Taking away a person's right to live how they choose is wrong. It is discrimination at best. To me, the philosophical exemption is the most important exemption. It is a confirmation that what I think, what I feel deep inside, who I am as a person, and how I choose to live is just that. It's mine. It's my choice. Removing the philosophical exemption is saying one group of people should be able to dictate how another group thinks and behaves. We can all agree that action is not a republic. It's not a democracy. That's not who we are as Mainers or Americans. Thank you. And just one other thought as people were talking...oh, he's not even here right now. I know Representative Stuckey was asking about why in 471 that people would have an issue with it, and I haven't really heard anyone mention that. Yes, parents have to sit down for a vaccine counseling session, but after that, they also have to have the doctor sign the exemption form to then be exempt. It puts the family at the mercy of their doctor. And I agree, there's been some lovely doctors that have come up and spoke, but I happen to be in a community of people who have a lot of vaccine-injured children. They either delay vax or they don't vax, and I'll be honest, it's a scramble to try to find a doctor who will sit down and have a respectful dialogue with you, but then, you know, but then say, "I can tell you've done your research, and, you know, we're gonna leave it at that." So those doctors tend to be very popular with, you know, with our community, and they're few and far between in our experience.
We're at time, so if you want...
Yep.
Any questions? Representative Pymnson.
Hi, thanks for coming. Just to...the paper would be signed saying that you had the conversation, not that anyone agreed with your decision. It was just that the conversation happened. So just to make that clear.
Yeah, it kind of feels like it could then lead into something further, but I understand that. And I would just like to go on record as saying I've never Googled or read or listened to any similarities on this, the whole issue of vaccination. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Tim Hagney. Is Tim Hagney here? All right.
Okay, well, my name is Tim Hagney. I'm a naturopathic doctor, and I practice in Belfast. And I want to thank all of you members of the committee for being here. It must take a lot of energy to be able to sit here for all these hours and listen to us, but it's really appreciated. I'm actually one of the co-chairs of the Maine Association of Homeopaths, as well as being a naturopathic doctor. And this association is the oldest existing state homeopathic organization in the United States, and we currently represent 35 members throughout Maine. Well, and I want to address this issue because it affects our families and those of our patients. We hear a lot of emotional statements about the need to protect our children and older people from various diseases with vaccinations. As natural practitioners, and many of us are parents as well, we also understand that there are other means of treatment that not only protect from specific diseases, but bolster and improve natural immunity across the board. Many parents choose to use these options for various reasons. Some choose alternatives after they have seen symptoms within their own family that seems to be linked to the vaccinations. I'm not here to debate the pros and cons of any single approach. We want to emphasize the importance of freedom of choice. A parent must have the right to decide what gets injected into his or her child. Medical interventions are well-meaning but can have side effects, especially in a susceptible child or adult. One size does not fit all. If a parent has seen a bad reaction to a previous vaccination, it's possible she now understands that child's immune system reacts in an unforeseen way to these shots. Please, don't take away a parent's right to opt out of what really may not be the right medicine for that person. Again, we want to emphasize the issue of freedom of choice. Please don't take away a patient's right to provide safe and effective alternatives for themselves and their children. And, yeah, so it's about LD-606 and LD-471, and it's in opposition to both of those.
All right. Thank you very much. Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So is there a naturopathic, not official vaccine, but a naturopathic treatment to help both of the children's immune system? Or is this something that kicks in maybe when they're, you start when they're a little older?
Well, yeah, there are some practitioners who use homeopathic versions of the vaccination, and that's not an official thing to do. It's not something I do. Because that, frankly, I don't think is proven itself. But what we do is bolster the individual's immune system as much as possible. So we get them eating right. We kind of watch their immunity as it unfolds, and so it's really not a one-size-fits-all sort of a thing. And we would find homeopathic remedies that really fit that individual, as opposed to saying, "Well, I want a homeopathic vaccination." Some people might do that. Again, I don't do that, so...
So what would that look like for a newborn infant and maybe a mother who's nursing? Would that be helping him on eat and ingest things that are healthier, perhaps on to the child to help his child's immune system? Is that how you would approach that?
Right, and so you use the example of a newborn. So, right, the newborn presuming that they're exclusively nursing, right, it would be focused on the mother at that point.
Thank you.
Representative Pymnson.
Hi, thanks. So would that prevent measles masks, polio, Majinacoccal meningitis, diphtheria, flu?
Right, well, we're looking to aim at that prevention, yes. So as far as it can be proven to completely, you know, say that this person will never get those things, I don't think you can say that.
Do you have any evidence that you're even on the, starting on that road to prevent polio, diphtheria, Majinacoccal meningitis, flu, pertussis?
Well, we see people do very well. Let's say their immune system is struggling with a particular thing, whether it's getting repeated colds or whatnot.
I'm not talking about colds.
Well, that's an example. I'm using that example because the bolstering the immune system...
We're not talking about colds. We're talking about nasals, pertussis, Majinacoccal meningitis, polio, diphtheria.
Well, I guess we're talking about different things then.
Yeah.
Because this is bolstering the person's immune system in general, so...
Okay.
Is that a bashon?
I'm just wondering if through a homeopathic approach, you could bolster an infant's immune system till they get to an older age where they're better able to have, be immunized? Is that a possibility?
Well, yeah, see, that's an approach as well, right. That, you know, once the person's immune system is developed more so that they can tolerate shots better.
And then put them on a different schedule?
Yeah, that's an alternative, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Representative Percy.
Do you have any data on that?
Right, well, what specific thing are you asking about?
What Representative Bashan was talking about?
I don't have any with you right now.
Could you supply us some?
Yes, I could look for some.
Seeing no additional questions. Thanks very much for your testimony. Next we'll hear from Emily Brown. Is Emily Brown here? All right, welcome. And after Emily Brown, we are going to hop back to proponents, so I want to read off the next 10 people. That would be Mike Conley runs with, Natasha Suliman Goram, Andrew Suliman Goram, Angela Suliman Goram.
Those are their opponents.
Oh, they're signed up in the wrong place. All right, well, you'll probably end up at the end of what's for...but, um, so all the Sulimans are opponents?
Yes.
All right. And Dr. Jan Calatier, Gabriel Sidello.
I already went.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, I'll drop you out. During the weeks, and then I've got two people who are signed up. I'm not sure what they intended, but they're kind of both proponents. And opponents, Pamela Gary and Rebecca O'Brien.
So, and I should have been on the proponent list. I was...
What's your name?
Debbie Trigg.
Oh, yeah, the...we didn't find you at one point. Okay, yeah, we'll slip you in there. Okay, great. Yes.
Pamela Gary, opponent, proponent, it'd be confusing because it was just one line, so the assistant said just put you on one of them.
Okay, all right, well, we'll get you up to one of them. Good to see you. All right, it's Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and the members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Emily Brown, and I'm a resident of Auburn. I'm here today as a mother of two beautiful boys, a military wife, a state human degree, and health promotion. My husband and I chose to follow our first son's pediatrician's advice and fully vaccinated him up until 18 months of age. Prior to their son coming due for his varicella vaccine, I had done some research about the ingredients used in vaccines. When I asked the attending nurse if the vaccine contained the ingredients that I was personally concerned about, she was unable to find the vaccine insert, but promised to me that it contained none. I was never at any point given a vaccine information sheet or able to have an educated conversation or dialogue with any healthcare provider prior to any vaccine. Therefore, I had never been given the option of informed consent, being told that all vaccines were mandatory, and I was not once ever notified in any way of any risks or adverse reactions to any vaccine. My son received the varicella vaccine, and while in the waiting room, his legs swelled up to three times its normal size. I brought this to the doctor's attention, and they claimed that it was due to the adhesive and allergy to the adhesive on the band-aid, as it left a red mark from his legs swelling up so fast. They made us wait 15 minutes in the waiting room. And while this happened, they then sent us on our way. A while later, despite being up to date on his MMR vaccines, my son came down with a bumps. Anyone that remembers the bumps knows. It's a visual thing, you can absolutely tell. I brought him to the doctor, and she would not even entertain the idea. She refused to test him for it and was unable to recognize the symptoms, telling me that the symptoms were that of the measles. I asked her to report it to VAERS, and she refused, telling me that it was too much paperwork and never informed me that I was able to do it myself. So that 10% that you hear that is ever brought up, I actually think that it's less than that. Just in this one child of mine, those two examples that we've experienced show huge flaws in the statistics of safety. LD-471 aims to require a signature from a healthcare practitioner for a philosophical exemption. No person should ever be assigned the authority over our rights, nor the jurisdiction over our bodies. I've yet to meet, with the exception of our pediatrician now, a doctor who is able to have an educated dialogue without being bullied. LD-606 aims to remove our constitutional right to decline injected engineered virus or bacteria that has been prone in the decayed cellular matter of another species as well as that of our own. This is a product as well as a medical choice, a choice that in the case of a single illness claimed to be prevented, has been proven to fail even with a 99% documented vaccination rate and a 95% shown immunity. And I've studied those on the back. In 2011, the MMR vaccine actually caused the measles virus, spreading it from a recently vaccinated woman in New York City to four other adults, two of which were fully vaccinated. That study was brought on by the CDC, who asked Jennifer Rosen, who is the director of epidemiology and surveillance at the New York City Bureau of Immunization. That was her conclusion. The only immunity in the case of vaccinations that is guaranteed is the waiver of liability to injuries caused by the pharmaceutical companies who are selling these products. I ask that you do not take away our philosophical rights. Every parent has a choice. They have a choice to what you put into our bodies and our children. I appreciate your time and strongly urge you to vote not to pass on LD-471 as well as LD-606.
Thank you very much. There's a question from Representative Bashan.
Can you educate me a little bit about the...
The vaccine adverse event reporting system. I was actually just notified here that it's required for pediatricians to report adverse reactions to vaccinations, although we were denied twice.
So is it only pediatricians?
I'm not exactly sure. I was just educated that that is a requirement. So I'm not sure. I actually plan on following up with that information, getting that myself, so...
Okay. Do you know how we can get access to that, and can we get information on...
I would love to know that information, wow, because I'm just educated on that here.
We can't have all the chatter, but if someone would like, it can be provided to us for the work session. We'd love to review that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always great to see someone up here from Auburn, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, jumping to, back to proponents, we'll start with Deb Dietrich.
Good afternoon, Representative Gattin and Senator Brackey and members of the committee. I'm very happy to be here this afternoon. It's been a long day. My name is Deborah Dietrich, and I am senior vice president for Community Health at Maine Health, which is the state's largest healthcare system. I'm here today to support LD-471 in an opposition to LD-1076. We believe that LD-471 promotes informed, shared decision-making among parents and their trusted healthcare providers to make choices that are right for their own children regarding vaccinations. It does not, as several people have already indicated today, remove parents' right to opt out of immunizations for their children, and we do support not only the right, but the opportunity for engaged conversations with healthcare providers. This bill would simply require parents who choose to opt out to obtain a signature from their child's healthcare provider after having an open conversation with their provider. As someone who's been involved with public health in Maine for more than 30 years and is a parent of a 17-year-old, and actually, I am one of the individuals who was referenced earlier today. I was actually in the clinical trials... I was actually in the clinical trials for the Salk vaccine in 1955. So I was a participant in the Salk vaccine trials. My brother and I, my dad was a pediatrician, signed us up, probably without our consent, to be involved in those trials. And I'm very proud to have recognized that, actually, this past month was the 60th anniversary of the announcement of the polio vaccine, which is a great accomplishment. So here I am, after having participated in the clinical trials, having never had polio, thank goodness. I'm a strong supporter of immunizations. In 2010, the Maine Health System set a goal of improving the state's immunization rate to 82% by 2016. So as a health system, we committed to that, 82% by 2016. In the years since then, our doctors and practices have been working very hard to increase the up-to-date rates of kids who are immunized, fully immunized and up to date. And I'm pleased to say we're making a lot of progress in that regard. But statewide, the situation is much more challenging. And as you heard earlier today, our immunization rate is declining. It went from 72.6% in 2012 to 68% this past year. And that is only for children between the ages of 19 and 35 months, by the way, who are up to date for their full group of immunizations. Physicians, nurses, hospitals, and the health system are doing our part to help Maine children and their families be healthy and free from preventable and extensive infectious diseases. And we ask you to do your part and pass LD471. And I'd be happy to answer any questions to my head.
Representative Bashan.
Just trying to understand this whole thing a little bit. I'm hearing everybody's a lot of testimony today. I can clearly hear that some children couldn't handle these immunizations. My question for the health professionals is, it would seem to me if everybody's getting all of these immunizations all at once, it is hard to figure out which one caused what. So has the medical community looked at a different delivery of how they do the vaccinations so that they can measure or figure out what may be some of the causes for some of these children that have been sensitive to some of the immunizations?
There is a recommended schedule for immunizations that is endorsed by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and many other organizations. So that is the recommendation. It is fully possible and oftentimes happens that that schedule is deviated from for a variety of reasons. Either the parent is unsure about having all of those recommended vaccinations at a particular time. And again, that's the reason for the conversations between the providers and the patient. And it's not, by the way, just one conversation that you have with your provider and it's done. These conversations, I dare say, need to happen every time your child is to be vaccinated. And again, that's the point of this bill, is to promote that conversation happening. It's not a one-and-done situation. So yes, there are reasons to deviate, and we fully expect that that will happen based on the individual circumstances of that family and that provider.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Connolly of Brunswick.
Yes, I'm looking for the award, whatever it is. It might be a cupcake. For most pithy remarks, and that is that everything that I would say has been said, so I'm done.
Do we have an extra cupcake? We do have a saying in this committee. It's from my favorite William Shakespeare. Brevity is the soul of wit. And eternal. Anika too, cupcake. I think that was part of the original Shakespeare quote, too. All right, moving right along. The Sulimans are from a lot of places. Dr. Jan Hilleter? Don't wait here a while. Everybody bleeds out in our cupcake assembly.
I love chocolate. Good afternoon, Senator Breaky, Representative Gutten, and distinguished members of the panel of Health and Human Services. I thank you for this opportunity to express support for both 606 and 471. I also submitted a testimony in opposition of 1076, but I won't discuss that for the sake of time. My name is Dr. Jan Hilleter. I am the president of the Maine chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, representing the 220 pediatricians in the state, part of a nonpartisan membership national group consisting of 60,000 pediatricians, the largest of its type in the world. We support both 471 and 606. To focus on 471, I will say one thing. Being a teacher as well, that we must agree, education is important. To focus on LD606, I'll try to say some things that haven't been said. They mainly fall within the arena of lives saved and economic benefit. As you've heard, vaccines mostly are safe, are effective, and are recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Since 1977, so for 40 years, these vaccines have been recommended. Universal immunization for children has been recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. In the U.S., vaccines have been federally funded for the last 20 years. The CDC estimates that during that time, maintained immunizations have saved over 700,000 childhood lives, over 300 million illnesses, and over 20 million hospitalizations.